What do you have to talk about?
And now we're fine, should be picking this up. So good evening and welcome everybody to the regular planning board meeting of Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to welcome Aaron. Aaron is joining us tonight for the first time as an alternate board member. I understand you were appointed by the board, the council, not the meeting ago, not very sure when, but welcome. Happy to have you here and look forward to working with you. So again, again, welcome, Aaron. How do you say your last name, Aaron? Rouse. Rouse. Okay, thank you. So before we begin with the the regular meeting, is there anybody in the public that would like any public comments? There are any public comments from the members of the public? Seeing no public comments, we'll acknowledge that at this point, no one is on Zoom, so there will be no public comments there. Do we, moving on, approval of the April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes? I'll be abstaining from those because I wasn't here at that meeting, but Christine, I understand you have a amendment you'd like to offer.
Well, I have a very commonest correction set. I think we just get the.
Okay, sure. So yeah, if we can look at those, Jenny, have you seen those?
I have.
Yeah. Any, any issue?
No, he's.
Any issue with those? Okay, fair enough. So for the record and for the minutes, I'll recognize Christine, Chris, as a voted member tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
So if we could just make sure the minutes right. She did it. Okay. And so we're all aware of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Chris?
Can we wait and see if there's a lot of amendments? We wait and see if and then pass them next week.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. That's fine. We'll wait until next week on those. And so getting right into new business, MSP twenty-three zero zero five Outlet Farm Golf Club is proposing a site plan amendment to map eleven law thirty-two. You all have had an opportunity to review the documentation before you again emphasize the word, this is a site plan amendment to the original site plan permit that was granted back in nineteen ninety-five. So with that being said, the plan seems pretty straightforward to me. And Mr. Flynn, if you want to kind of just give us a brief overview of what you're proposing?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be good by us.
Essentially, we have a good problem. We've sort of outgrown our facility, so we want to expand our kitchen space in our bar space on the restaurant. So to do that, we'd also have to move the footprint of our pro shop as well. So I should, that's the move. So those of you that are not familiar with the facility, this is just the building space here. I didn't show you the outdoor patio space, but we have a kitchen area in the back, which is in front of the building where we actually entered from. And then we have our bar area here. This is where our pro shop is. This is our main dining room. Okay. What we're proposing is a phase one to this build out is to move our kitchen space and expand it. So move it from this sort of the north part of the building and then moving it to the east side, expanding it by about double the size. Now that would allow us just a little bit of detail. We don't even have a proper washing area. In our current kitchen, we use a red barn, washing area at the moment. So we would add in, we build up this kitchen area and we would, based on we would move our kitchen space to the kitchen. On top of expanding the space, it also allows us to put the kitchen area in the middle of the service area as well.
Can I just, sorry?
Go ahead.
How big is that, that new area?
This is seven hundred and twenty-three square feet.
Okay.
And this is about, I think, all in, it would be walking forwards about two eighty. Also, our current kitchen is a long way with more outdoor dining. This is a last steps. This will cut down our steps for people as well. So that's a trip to the bed. Is that? Yeah, also, it also allow us to get direct access from the kitchen area directly out of the patio from the service department. So it's also good from the service department as well. That's sort of our phase one, like phase one A to make that all happen, we would need to also move our pro shop. Our current pro shop sits in this space here. We would build an extension onto the west side of the pro shop area. We currently have an outdoor field here. We've moved that, moved that down. We build out a whole pro shop area here. That would allow us to complete our fitness too.
Yeah. Can you speak up a little bit? We're having a trouble hearing you.
So by by moving our pro shop from this space out with the new, with the new addition, we can now expand our our bar area as well. So our indoor bar space will move from approximately sixteen seats to thirty-four seats. So that's what we're looking for in terms of expansion. Really, the main things are, it is a, it's a kitchen expansion and footprint move. And it's also a shift, not really increasing the size of the pro shop, but certainly moving it to allow for expansion down down farm area as well. So it's.
Can you, yes. Can you orientate? We're talking about your big barn building, right?
Yes. No, we're talking about the tavern area.
The little one, the little one that's next to it. Gotcha. Okay. But this is great. Okay, gotcha. Good. I think.
So what you're proposing is an expansion down by the seating area and then another expansion upwards where the pro shop is. You're going to do another kind of addition up there.
On the west side.
On the west side. So we're talking.
Sorry, east side.
So we're talking two, two additions.
Two additions. Yeah. So our plan would be for this summer to build out the kitchen sort of framing and then move the kitchen, the actual kitchen along. Once we get out of season, we would move all the equipment over in the short period of time, you know, possible. We don't want it to cut down for a long period of time. So that's why we phased it, the way we've done it. And then we would try to add the pro shop piece on in through the winter, in the golfers down, and then expanding the bar area over the middle.
Fortune. The chair there?
Yeah, yeah, Chris.
So you don't plan on increasing the retail square footage of your pro shop by doing?
I'm starting on increasing.
Not, not, not much. And then I didn't quite catch what you said. You're going to be thirty-four total seats in the bar, but what are you now?
We're sixteen.
So you're doubling?
Yeah, we're doubling our bar.
You're doubling the bar, yeah.
So right now, we have, so we have a lot of, we have a lot of folks like to sit the bar and dine. We have four, we have four seats. That's all we have. So we want to expand that at our actual bar.
My only question to the board is, I was here obviously in nine five months or so. Does that additional fifteen, sixteen home number of seats, they're parking, they have plenty of parking at the golf course. This is not an issue. So they're, they're expanding.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
One space for every three seats.
Right.
I'm sure they have parking. I just need to ask.
Yeah. No, I think it's a different question to ask because you're doubling the bar stage. Do you have any, any idea on that?
Well, we have, yeah. So what we typically do, if we have a, if we have a wedding and a tournament, we have, we have full space that is actually out on our driving range. So we can expand all the apartments that are.
Oh, and thank you. Can you just let the board know?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep.
Can you just let the board know how many parking spaces you have inside?
I don't give you that.
That's fine.
It's going to be. I can get that one.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah. So quickly, you give us the, the first area, the phase one, the new kitchen area. What was the square footage roughly on that? That, you know?
So right now.
You said seven hundred?
Seven hundred and twenty-three square feet.
All right. Yeah, it's just hard to see on the, on the maps. And then the new, the expanded bar area pro shop, what's that adding?
Is forty?
Or what was that? Forty-three?
That's.
What are they currently?
Uh, it's currently probably about four hundred. Three. Actually, no, it's. I forget. Sorry, I'm going to add these up. So the pro shop space is forty-three. We have additional, we've got a pro shop office in there, the top of the PCF, okay, so we have barbers, pro shop office one point one. And the, we see pro shop entry, that's actually outdoor space covered. That's.
You say those numbers a little louder. I'll do that for you.
Pro shops, the space is going to forty-three. So this is one twenty-one. In the entrance area, which is outside the cupboards, it's going to be seventy-eight.
Seven.
Right.
That's it. And there's.
About six eighty-two.
One of the things where we miss that, we have a small occupation now.
I've known you, no new.
Which is behind our bathrooms here. So one of the things we're also doing is not part of the engagement.
No, this is the best.
Just think of this. Yeah.
That's a different.
stalls and. This is.
Right.
Hershey. There's a thing saying about five hundred.
See, so I looked at this a couple of different ways here, and I think this is kind of the conversation we're having to the sidebar conversation. I've seen a couple of different things now that here. There's that one.
Yeah. And here's this. And then.
Right. So I'm looking at an expansion.
And there's this.
Almost twelve hundred square feet. Is that about right? Yeah. So it's, it's four eighty-three plus the seven twenty-seven. Yep. Okay.
That's.
So there's new.
That's all.
Right. Those two areas in there.
All right. Cool.
There.
Um, I am sure Mike checked this for you since I, this is from Lassel Architects, but you check on as whatever the uses, assembly or restaurant or whatever your capacity does. My only question. I suddenly got a plan. That's just. All right.
Jenny, were there any issues with any of the other prior conditions? Did we have a chance to look at that?
Yep, pulled them off. And I didn't see anything. And it's not going to affect their swimming water at all. I made sure that our public works director also weighed in on that aspect, made sure I was correct on that. And he did the letters in your.
Yep. Okay.
You know, again, even though it's an amendment, we don't see an area. Not necessarily worried about the traffic or the parking. Not really too worried about the handcaping issues.
I do have one safety question.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead.
How is this going to change ventilation for the, for the restaurant? And make sure again, if they are texting care of it, are you, are you ventilating up? Are you going out toward where your?
For.
Features are?
For the.
For the new.
Yeah, they're going.
They're going up.
Yes. Yeah, that's like they are now. Actually, the kitchen itself will be ventilated.
Yeah, I'm sure. It will be seven to two hundred and something square feet. So it is, I've heard.
Oh, yes.
So ventilating out is a very good area. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Don't forget.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Don't forget Jen will do photo inspection. The kitchen will have to go through.
Are you going to do the building permit, get all that stuff? So if anything else comes up, we'll pick it up at the building and inspection. Okay.
And on a planning issue.
So just to be clear, folks, that again, this is a site plan amendment. So this is a little bit different. Then we're not doing a major site plan or minor site plan for me that. So this decision here, that can be a decision to then ultimately, what would happen here is, you know, we can make the determination, but ultimately, it's going to get, get voted on at the next meeting under a findings of fact. So technically, it wouldn't be formally approved until the next meeting. So after the approval of that finding of fact, so it's a little bit different than we're typically used to doing, you know, having to do sketch plan and then do a public hearing and then, you know, having to go through preliminary and then file a plan. So again, because this is simply an amendment, we can go right to the approval process on this. So I don't see an issue moving forward. It complies with, you know, the, the codes, the ordinances that we have on the books. It's not affecting the original conditions of the permit that was issued back in nineteen fifty-five. So this would be an opportune time for anybody that wants to make a motion for approval, to make that motion.
Emotionally approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I did. Oh, I missed it. Yeah, I put that friend of the meeting for Chris. So is there any further conversation from any board members? No further conversation, all in favor of approval of the site plan amendment, MSP twenty-three zero zero five.
Out of favor.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. So what we'll do is we'll prepare a findings of fact. That'll come back at the next meeting on June seventh, where it'll be formally adopted. And then you can work with Jenny and get the necessary premise to come forward. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So quick for the applicant.
I can't wait.
You guys can come to the findings of fact meeting or you don't have to. It's really up to you. Yeah, we'll give you an invite.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your expansion. I can't wait. Have a burger.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, with that, sport.
You have a good burgers.
Bye, guys.
And make care.
I've never been to.
All right. So moving on, as you recall, at the last meeting, we kind of tabled a lot of issues that came up at our last meeting, given the fact that the meeting went so late into the evening with a public hearing. So we're going to bring back up a couple of those items. One is an ordinance amendment related to chapter one forty-two, the assessor's law merger policy. I, I had, I reviewed this, my, my own perspective here, and I had a conversation with town staff relative to this. And printed, printed a copy.
It's behind the other stuff. It's behind the table eight changes. I'm lying.
It would be, it would have been in here.
Yeah, but I didn't have my, I didn't have my packet, remember?
Yeah.
It was after.
Here.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think it's pretty obvious and clear what is being requested from the assessing agent. You know, well, it's, it's clear to me, Hershey, in the sense of, you know, we have an existing ordinance that addresses the voluntary merger or pre-existing approved, pre-existing or approved subdivision lots or parcels. But in the, the, the ordinance is drafted, really leads me to question why we're even putting us, the planning board, into the position of approving a lot merger, when it really just gives the impression that this is just a rubber stamp. And which is fine. I'm okay with accepting that, that it's a rubber stamp, that we shall approve it. But I guess the question becomes, we can, we can, you know, the conversation should be, do we want to modify it? It's pretty straightforward. We can approve it, move it to a public hearing and send it off to the plan, the town council after that. Happy day. But I just really think, do we even need it? Yeah. And I don't know if that's been discussed or, you know, what, if there's a recommendation from town staff on, or the assessor, it seems like we're doing it because we just have to do it because we have an existing policy that needs to be modified to comport with the Supreme Court decision, right? So you modify it. Good. We're good to go. But if we're just saying, you know, we're going to approve it anyway. It seems to be kind of a waste of time, frankly. And why are we taking someone to the planning board when we're saying we're going to approve it anyway? And any thoughts, comments, questions, comments, concerns on that? I mean, I'm happy to move forward.
We still have to approve it, though, whether it's the fate to comply or not, right?
Well, but what I'm saying is, can we move this to the staff level approval or just make the, let, let the assessor do it?
I don't know if we can. Can we? It's an ordinance change. It has to come from us and be recommended to the town council. And let's just then move it along, which that's.
Staff recommends, if I.
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah.
Staff recommends either proving it as amended or getting rid of it totally. We could go either way on that. But if we're going to keep it as an ordinance, we need to amend it as.
Yeah, right. So again, like I said, that's, that we can amend an ordinance, update it to reflect the approval process. But again, it seems to me, when I read this, and based on the, the information that was given to us by the assessor in relation to that's pre-worked decision, I just question whether or not we actually need it. And is it just another layer of bureaucracy to go through?
I have images.
To what?
I really, I, yeah.
Just on behalf, if I can, just on behalf of Furnish Sharp, who is like on the stuff there, the bottom portion of that does need to stay. It's only the top portion that we're looking at that would need to be amended.
Yeah.
The bottom portion is worth it perfectly. Okay.
One, three, two, dash, three, fourteen.
I'm sorry, Frank has.
Yeah.
Whatever the bottom is, yeah.
One forty-two dash two.
Freezing.
Perfect skills.
Yeah.
Yes.
We would need to change one forty-two dash one to recognize for the planning board and one forty-two dash two to recognize and update the references to the planning board.
I.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to move it forward. I'm just, what I'm just throwing out there, maybe we look at this in the context of a larger overhaul of the ordinances in general, you know, and there's another time for that.
Right. I, I would say this needs to be approved because then we'll be in line with this ruling and let's just do it and then we're going to revise.
So that's my take. I can go either way on it. I'm fine with moving this forward to a public hearing. Are there any questions, comments or concerns? So can we have a motion to set a public hearing for the second meeting in June?
I make a motion that we have a public hearing on this proposed amendment to the ordinance in June.
The second meeting.
Second meeting in June.
Is there a second on that?
It'll be June twenty-first.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
At seven, yeah.
I just go like.
We're in the jam.
Whatever.
The June seventh meeting. Samuel.
Okay.
Well, we probably could do it on seven, get it out of the way.
Yes.
Let's do it on June seventh.
Yes.
Yeah, let's. Ben, that motion.
I amend, but you threw out the date. I said the second day in June.
Yeah, but it hasn't, it hasn't been voted on. Is there anybody who motioned and seconded to change that?
I amend my motion so that you will have. What?
You have to put a time on it. And we've already had, we already have one for seven and seven ten. So it has to be like seven twenty, something after that. Fifty public hearings in it already.
You don't want us to have the public hearing on the.
I do. I just want you to put a time on it just for.
Seven fifteen.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get through this one pretty quick. Yeah.
Robert's. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Been seconded and all favor of that motion to have a public hearing June seventh.
Hi.
All favor, great. Okay, we'll move that to a public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, Jenny, you're up with LD two thousand and three.
I'm very excited about this.
Okay, so you guys, we have a new howl. Let me just get my ducks in a row if I can. Chairman screen up on here for you guys.
So for a reference, there's a packet of information in front of you related to basically what would be tonight's conversation. For some background, Jenny, I think it's fair to say the planning board has had and met and heard, discussed preliminary conversations related to LD two thousand and three over the summer and then back in the fall, I believe. We had a meeting with SM PDC about this. And so my understanding now, Jenny, is LB two thousand and three has been reviewed by town staff and the necessary ordinances.
And SM PDC.
Uh, have, yeah, town staff and SM PDC have bumped through our existing ordinances and are offering us a redlined version of the potential changes that so that we could technically come into compliance with LD two thousand and three. Is that correct, Jenny?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's this set of documents before you tonight. Zach, you had a question?
I'm just wondering if we can turn that panel, people, I, I hear a lot of noise.
I'm hearing this one back here.
If you want to shut it off.
Thanks, Karen.
I hope to hear better.
So Jenny, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this is the presentation on LD two thousand and three. This does not have the ordinance embedded into the presentation. It have, it has facts to deal with South Rowick and the laws that are coming down the line. Do you guys have informational packets in front of you that are used for, it's just informational items for tonight? Um, I do have extra copies in the thing in court office, if anyone on Zoom would like to take a look at them, uh, they're welcome to. But here we go. LD two thousand and three, town of South Rowick, this has to deal with ADUs, which is, uh, you know, a press big dwelling unit and. Bonus that bonus density and affordable housing. So. Little background, how do we get here? So background information, all information on this slide, I do not omit. It is, um, a slide from SM PDC's website. Um, this slide was, um. Created by me, but all this information was written by Lee J. Thelman from SM PDC and Hannah Goleman from SM PDC. I just wanna put it out there, the only information. LD two thousand and three was passed by state legislature and signed by the governor in April of two thousand and twenty-two. The law went into effect July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. However, the bill's requirements do not took effect. Until July one, two thousand and twenty-three, which we're coming up on now. The goal of the new law is to alleviate the housing affordability, afford, yeah, affordability issues, sorry about that, and made by these housing opportunities. It requires towns and cities to increase housing density allowed in their zoning ordinance in several different ways. Here in South Rowick, there were seven different areas of our ordinance that needed to be updated, renewed, and amended. It requires municipalities to allow additional units on lots, so for single-family homes. It requires municipalities allow, uh, to allow at least one accessory dwelling unit on lots with existing single-family homes all over. In some areas, see below, which, just to let you know, there's no below, but you'll see that later on in the slide. It is, uh, it requires municipalities to allow. Two and a half times the current allowed housing units for developments, where most of the units meet standard affordability definitions. What municipalities can do? And then in turn, there are some actions your municipality may consider to manage these requirements in a way. Uh, that best suits your community. These include enacting lot size per unit requirement, as long as the required area for. Subsequent unit is not larger than the first. Defining maximum number of allowed accessory dwelling units per lot and maximum size requirements for those units. Regulating short-term rentals, and be aware of some. Whatever. That one, that one you'll see, growth area. Okay, so. In the growth area here in South Rowick, um, we're gonna talk about that. Um, that's gonna probably be a number one question for the community. Um, our comprehensive plan, we heard from Reagan Young today from SM PDC, um, she talked with me on the phone. And the growth area for, um. Southburg hasn't been determined quite yet, however. Um, you're gonna, you'll see information on that as we go on here. This is just, again, background information, but. Um, Reagan did tell the needs on the phone today that they are in the inventory stage of the comp plan. And as they work and move into the final stages of the comp plan, the growth area will be determined at that point. So it won't be far from now, long from now, that we will know what that is. Okay, so.
Generally, it's been, at least in the past, where there's water and sewer, town water and sewer provided. With the idea that it's sort of closer to downtown, especially.
Towns, who are sent there, all the things take.
Do, do, do you have any further info on that, cause? There was some conversation earlier on about. This. These changes being. A function of. The water and sewer. In other words, wherever that is, you have to do this stuff. And then it seems to go, well, now it only needs water and. Doesn't really need sewer, but maybe it doesn't need any one of them at all. So is that still? The, a, a decision point of. I mean, we could go beyond that. Don't get me wrong. What I'm saying is, but is that still one of the, what I'll call the limiting factor?
We don't know.
Or do we not know?
It's not a limiting factor, but if you, um, if you knew to watch the fight show, it's gonna answer this.
Fair enough.
What she means.
Yeah, shut up.
I'm just saying, when you.
Be along, be along.
All right.
Let's go, next slide.
Well, just keep going, but that's not what I meant. I'm just saying, like, it's all in here.
Okay.
All right, next slide.
Okay.
Everybody see?
South of Berks timeline, like, how do we get here? What have we been doing, right? August eighth, the town kind of learned about the statewide housing production goals, and they began to take effect, okay? Um, November of two thousand and twenty-two, town staff started to brainstorm how to incorporate this into town of Southburg zoning ordinance. January, town staff conducted extensive research and spoke with SM PDC on helping with the guidance and questions. We created a, um. Kind of situation where staff was gonna take this project on, we were gonna hand it over to SM PDC, and they were gonna find to comment. Um, and that's the document that you have in front of you today. In, um. March, SM PDC sent town staff the LD two thousand and three guidance document, and everything that. Um, we needed to really do, there's a couple of things that weren't in here, but everything that we needed to do, pretty much explained it in the guidance document that the state created, which was fantastic. March twenty-twenty-two, town staff started embedding into the current ordinance. Um, there was a lot of phone calls made to Lee J. Um, about just helping with that. May twenty-twenty-three, oh, you know what, guys, just to let you know, these should all be twenty-twenty-three, my mistake, I'll fix that. Um, May twenty-twenty-three, sorry, town staff finalized rough draft, and we sent it over to SM PDC. Um, May eleventh, SM PDC conducted the final editing, review, and approve the documents final. They went through our entire ordinance, but it finds to clone to make sure that everything matched. Cause sometimes when you change something in the ordinance, everybody knows it's in several other different places too, and we catch them later sometimes. Um, so that's done. This document is the final document from SM PDC. It has been approved, um, by Lee J. Thelman. Five seventeen, you guys are seeing this presentation. Um, this has been a topic of discussion in the code enforcement office and planning office downstairs for nine months. On May eleventh, Paul from SM PDC told staff that the town of Southburg was ahead of most other communities on finalizing the ordinance amendments. Um, we know that. The only other, what we believe, or SM PDC believes is the other, um, community that is ahead of us on this is done with, they're pretty much done with it. Uh, so you guys could actually take a look at their ordinance if you'd like to. Um, SM PDC has found to have phoned it. I've already said that. So moving on. Affordable housing. Affordable housing development is allowed in multi-family, um, dwelling zones that allow it now. So R-one, R-one A, R-two, R-two A, R-three, B-one, B-two, I-two, and BR. It's two-point-five the density of per allowance. Parking is two off-street parking spots per three units. It's actually, the calculation is a point-six-six parking spots per unit. Um, public specialty or centrally managed water and sewer supply is necessary for these.
Can I, can I ask, is the only zone it's not allowed in that is I-one, or are there other zones I'm missing?
Or five.
It's not allowed, yeah. Affordable housing development, because it's multi-family dwellings, um, that we have to in, embedded into our ordinance. It's not allowed in our, for our five zone or the I-one zone at this time. However, we should talk, we will have to talk later about the I-one zone. Go ahead.
Can I, can I ask then, um? But since the other part of LD two thousand and three allows for multiplexes where you would normally have a single-family house. Doesn't that mean you're allowed multiplexes now, or up to four units? In. Our four and our five?
So, um, LD two thousand and three has kind of like two, three buckets.
Right, I know, I got you.
One's affordable housing, one's what you're talking, one's ADUs. Um, this is your bonus density, that this is the part of bonus density. You're gonna see that later on in the, in the show, and it's gonna tell you exactly how it fits into the R-four and I-five, so, our five zone. Does that make sense?
No.
Yeah. Let's just.
No.
Write the question down.
Okay. Thanks.
So we can, we're gonna answer, maybe we'll.
I don't know if it will, but I can answer it a few later if it does.
Right now, I think what she's saying is all she's addressing is one of the buckets.
Just bonus density.
So the bonus density, so we're gonna get to that multi.
No, no, I understand the bonus density. I don't understand why if our, if our four and our four, five. By virtue of the first part, allow three or four units. Why the affordability component doesn't also allow three or four units, and why our four and our five doesn't have affordable housing?
Great question, but I think it'll answer it for you.
Okay, let's just move on.
Okay. Long-term affordability.
Like, yeah.
Stop it. I think, I would never say that to you.
You could say that.
No, I would never, I would never say that. Long-term affordability. Before occupancy is granted by the code enforcement officer, not planning board, the code enforcement officer. Um, there must be a restrictive covenant recorded at the registry of deeds that must state that they're gonna have these rentals, um, available for thirty years. Uh, rentals, rental units are eighty percent of the local area median income. How they figure out how to charge that is initial occupancy. So if I was to build. Um, a multi-family unit today, and I was to occupy it tomorrow. Um, it would be whatever eighty percent of the local median income is for this area.
You would have to income qualify yourself to it.
Yeah. Owned, which is, um, you know, like, buying a house, buying a rental, whatever, buying a condo, rather. Um, it's a hundred and twenty percent of the local area median income. Again, that thirty years still applies there.
Jenny, are there any restrictions on owner occupation of those?
Oh, on what?
So, almost no.
On what?
Yeah, can you hear you?
Owner occupation, owner occupancy.
I just wondered if there was a restriction on owner occupancy of a multi-unit that's being designated as affordable.
Not that we've seen, but that does come up in the ADU at the end.
Okay, so.
Yep. Owner shall provide in writing, um, to the code officer or the planning board, depending on what they're trying to build, because, let me just state that. Even if you're putting up a multi-unit, um. Multi-family unit, it's supposed to go for planning board approval. It's still major site plan. Okay, so water, sewer, they have to supply and writing that they have adequate water supply for each dwelling unit. An adequate sewer or subsurface waste water disposal systems for the site in general. Okay. Residential areas. This moves into the next topic. This is what you're talking about, I think, Hershey. Each dwelling must have adequate water and wastewater for each dwelling unit on site. We just talked about that. Um, existing dwelling units. So this is where it becomes. Um, our four, I, our five zone, other zones, okay? For lots with one existing unit. Up to two dwelling units shall be allowed. One additional dwelling unit within or attached to an existing structure. Or one additional detached dwelling. Or one of each. Dimensional requirements must be met for all dwellings except road frontage. So here's a good example, just so that we can have a good understanding of this. If Bill lived out on, I don't know, where do you wanna live? A gunpoint road, we'll put you there. And he was going to put up, he, he lives on the property, so he has a, a single-family dwelling unit there now. And he wanted to put up two additional dwelling units, okay? If in that zone, it's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet per house, okay, per dwelling unit, he would have to have, for one additional, he would have to have two hundred and forty thousand square feet. Uh, for his second, and. Three hundred and sixty for his third. However, he has to meet all the dimension requirements of the setbacks from each of the houses, the structures. Um, so if it's fifty feet from side yard to side yard, you have to meet that hundred-foot setback, et cetera. However. If he only has the three hundred feet of road frontage that, you know, um, designated for allowing in that zone for a single-family home. He doesn't have to increase that to nine hundred feet. It stays at three hundred. Do you understand that part? That's in Table B of our ordinance. Um, if Bill owned. Um. A lot of vacant land in the same zone or any other zone, whatever, um, and a lot is vacant currently. He could put up to four dwelling units. And they shall be allowed there. Dimensional requirements must be met, except road frontage. Um. Planning board approval for subdivision still applies here.
Yeah.
However, however. The planning board, um. You know. DJ will be able to speak better on this later on, or Hannah, um, moving forward with this, but. Um, it's still subdivision. So to go through the subdivision process. Just you have to be careful of conditions of approval for that subdivision.
So before you move on, so just a couple of questions that I. Think I'm developing in my head.
Yeah.
So the existing dwelling unit. A house on two acres. Uh, could now build. Uh, I could, uh, build, uh, I could build another structure, going in it within, so I could build another garage. Off the back of my home with an apartment. Or I can build an additional. Building, another, one bedroom apartment somewhere else. Or I could do one of each. Whatever I build, though, if I build a new. Carriage house next to the house, I still have to meet all the dimensional requirements, in other words, the setback requirements, et cetera.
Each other, yeah.
The frontage issue. Uh, we could combine and work it out, so. I don't have to beat it, really. It doesn't matter anymore, so it just goes away. But do you still have to meet the minimum for one lot, like that three hundred feet or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. So. I could go out, build a house, I could have five acres, and today I'm gonna build a house. And. I'm not gonna tell you that I'm gonna, uh, next year, or in six months, I'm gonna build my house, and then in six months, I'm gonna build all these structures. What's the approval process for that? Because if I'm going out to a vacant piece of land. You know, now you gotta go through the subdivision ordinance, but is this a backdoor way? You know, to say, hey, I put it at home here, six months from now, I'm living in it. Now I wanna go put in all these other accessory structures. And it almost seems like, well, what process does that go through for the planning board at that point, if at all?
So.
It almost seems like that would just simply be approved by you at that point, under the ordinance, which, hey, if that's what the state is telling us we have to do, then fine. But it seems. If I gotta do the vacant land, and now you gotta haul them in and go through the subdivision process. It seems a little odd. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you have to put time limits on the amount of time between building a structure or the addition of people.
I don't know if you can.
Well, you can't, no, they just do it either.
But, and again, I'm not, I'm not really commenting, and I'm just saying, hey, I see a potential issue. I don't know exactly what at this point, but this seems kind of weird.
Jenny, how, how do non-conforming lots of record fit into this? Because they don't mean. Setbacks.
The existing dwelling that's on-site has to be a legal conforming law of record. So that housing to meet all the appropriate setbacks for that zone. Now. It gets kind of gray here, and this is a good question for SM PDC, because I'm not sure of the answer. When I thought about this this afternoon. My question is, what about those lots that are legally non-conforming now? They have an existing structure on them, okay? And the town has decided not to take action on it. And then it becomes illegal, non-conforming law. What happens then? So that's a good question for Lee J. That I'm gonna have to find the answer to, because I'm not sure of it.
Will you say that again?
So, if you have a lot, so if you build a house, like, to say, here, this is your house. And you need a hundred feet of road frontage, you have to be fifty-five, uh, fifty feet off the, uh, front property marker, we'll just say. Okay, we'll stop there.
Yeah.
You're only forty feet off that front setback.
With the existing structure?
Yep, that's already there. And the town knew about it, they didn't take action on it, okay? How does that play in later on to? This LD two thousand and three, how you, like, one of the guidelines says that it has to be a legal. Conforming law, a record, you know?
I would say, you know, the town didn't take action, it's still non.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, because then it, because even if they did, if they didn't take action, and they said they weren't going to, then it becomes illegal, non-conform law of record, because it doesn't meet the setback requirements, or the dimensional requirements. Of that zone. I'm just gonna clarify that with SM PDC, because I think I know the answer on it, but I don't know the answer on it. Um, and it's a good question. So. But I'm not sure, but I.
Well, it would seem to be that with all new revamping of the ordinance, you know. If someone has a non-conforming law. You know. The law is changing. And they wouldn't be allowed to do this. Because it's a change, it's like a change in circumstances. You know, it's not, it's not like they're coming in today. Put this aside. It's not like they're coming in today, and you say, yeah, it's non-conforming, you can't do it.
Well, and also, a non-conforming law cannot be made more non-conforming.
That is correct, yeah.
You can only make it more conforming, and this would just make it less conformant, so that.
So this sounds like it would be the correct answer, but let's, I just wanna clarify, because I'm not sure.
And can I, I don't. If the intent of the law was to allow, where you have a single-family house. Four houses, say, right? It seems to be counterproductive to then say you still.
It seems to be counterproductive to then say you still have to have enough acreage to accommodate that. In your, you know what I mean?
So what are you saying? Say it one more time.
I'm saying if, if wherever you have, so in my, I'm in R three, right? So two acre zoning, right? So there's two acres, we have two acres and we have a house on it, or we're gonna put a house on it, right? But the law says we wanna encourage you to put in more housing. So you're saying we would still need more acreage to put in more housing and my impression was wherever I had a single family house, whatever the zoning is. As long as I met the original two acre zoning, I could now accommodate. Four, not that I had to have more square footage or more acreage.
I don't think you need necessarily need to have, depending on the layout of your lot, I don't see it that way.
But I, I thought.
You, you may need by default or. Of a larger lot to have, allow yourself more coverage.
But I, I thought the first thing you said was you needed this many hundred thousand square feet, and if you put another one, you need another this many half hundreds, blah, blah, blah.
My understanding of this is you are correct. Yep, the only thing that's different is anywhere that they allow multi-family. Like um units, okay, so in all the zones that were previously read on the first slide, it's like third slide, sorry. Um, so you, you can't like increase density more, right? So if it's ten thousand square feet for a one unit downtown, wherever, R one zone, wherever you are. You can go to twenty thousand, but you can't do more than that. If you can't create more of a mention of requirement than needed. Does that make sense? Your saying is correct.
That you don't, that if I have two acre zoning, it allows one house and then they allow me four houses, I'm allowed to do that.
That's my understanding.
As long as I meet the setbacks. Okay, so. Okay.
So you don't need the hundred and twenty, you don't need the hundred twenty, hundred twenty, hundred twenty.
Right, so, wait, so, so then my question is. It, it seems like if R four and R five are allowed a single family house. But now you're allowed to have four, and not affordable, just say four, period, right, which was the original first part of the whole LD two thousand and three.
Right.
Right? Okay, but I don't understand why, if you can have four, you say those can't be affordable. Why is that left out of the affordability part? Because you are allowed to have four houses. Where there was just one in R four and R five.
So let me maybe put this a different way. So I live in R four.
Okay.
And I have a single family home.
Right.
I could put up. A new unit, meet the setback requirements on my two acre lot, whatever. And nothing in law and the law says that it has to be affordable, is that correct? It seems like just a giveaway.
No, no, I, that's fine. What I'm saying is why, under the zones that allow for affordability, R four and R five aren't in there, I don't understand why they are.
It's just because of what this law said, uh when we embedded this into our ordinance, that we only had to put. Affordable bonus density, that's the bonus density side.
I understand.
Where multi-family units were already currently allowed.
That's what LD two thousand and three said that?
That was in the, that was in the guidance document.
Okay.
So whether or not that changes, I don't know, but that, that was the guidance for us to.
It's sort of a bit of a tautology though, right, in that, that once you, once you allow the first part to happen, now it does allow multi-family housing. So why wouldn't you have it in R four or five?
Would you like some of that? Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
That's you.
We, we have the option of putting it in R four or five, you want to?
For what?
For affordable housing.
Yeah, so if, if you, so if we change your ordinance and we allowed multi-family units in those zones. Problem is, then you're getting out of town sewer, town water, you're getting into, you know.
But we are gonna allow them, we're just allowing them in the first part of LD two thousand and three.
You at the planning board, you do it too. I don't know, I don't know.
Right, but there's, there, there's really, I think, a couple of larger issues here, and I brought it up at the last meeting and I talked about it before. The whole water issue in town. Every year, we end up getting into water restrictions, right? And.
You're allowed market rate housing, what's the difference?
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if we're gonna have a conversation about. The multi-family housing being in every zone. And, you know. You're getting into the water consumption issues. And we're already now with our current housing stock that we currently operate. You know, all those warnings go out about August, no, don't use your water, you gotta cut back, no washing cars, no filling your pools, no. No water in your lawns, none of that. And here we are, we're gonna add in another potentially exponential number of units. And my concern overall is, you know, we heard from the water superintendent at the last meeting. With Sandville that they would like to go in and upgrade, that that would then theoretically provide more water, new well site. You know, and, and I guess that's my only concern is if we keep saying, hey, build, 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 build. You know, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna get into, you know, you can do onsite septic, but now you're getting into larger issues of. Septic systems in general, onsite treatment, which is fully entirely possible.
Let's not allow market rate housing in four and five. Fine by me.
You know.
I would favor more affordability and. Let's not, also, I, you know, I think this is a bit of a red herring, really, though. I mean. There are predictions about how big our town is gonna become in the next ten years. There's a predict, I think it's twelve hundred. More units of housing are to be added, and I think it's over ten years, like it or not, or whether, whatever we do with the zoning code, that's gonna happen. And I assume there will be water capacity to meet it.
Well, I think that you're using the word assume, so you assume, and we already know that. They put restrictions on already, that's a known fact, they put restrictions on. And it's, you're assuming that it will be there in, maybe it will, I don't know, but right now, we know if you're on town water. Come summertime, near the end of summer, if we don't get rain, you know, it's, the warnings are going out.
Uh, I have a naive question. Do we have what's called a growth cap? Yes. Okay, so, does that conflict with the state coming to us with LD two thousand and three, and we already have a growth cap? Or does that fit under?
We do.
What the hell good is this, uh, growth cap?
It's so many building permits a year and it's subdivision and non-subdivision, we do have that.
Just that, that conflicts with this coming down from the state saying, we want more density, we want. Affordable housing in ADUs, and I understand the reason for that, but that conflicts with the fact that we already put a cap on it. Doesn't it? I don't, good question.
That's a great question.
I, I, I'd also like to know where the council is on. If we're gonna be doing this and drafting this and encouraging the growth, but I'm not saying yes or no to it personally. But what about the police? What about the fire? All those other issues that will directly burden the town.
Okay, but. This came up at our comp plan meeting, and I'm just gonna say it again, it is predicted that we are gonna add, I don't remember, twelve hundred more. People or units to our town, whether we like it or not in the coming years. People have land, they get to build on it, they're going to.
I don't disagree.
How we manage that, that will matter. We could have impact fees.
Yeah, which I think we should do.
Like, we should do, that's fine. Is that to the town council?
I think we already have that right to do impact fees, don't we?
So, um.
That's the town council.
Or is that kinda?
I'm actually working on um impact fees right now to present to you guys eventually. But um, it's just a work in progress for them taking data from several different communities that are local to us. To figure out how they handle it, what they do, and then we'll give you guys a good average for everything.
And, and the other thing is, I don't think. You don't have an option not to obey two thousand and three, it comes from the, it's a state law. We have to implement it, which means there's gonna be growth, whether we like it or not, it's for us to manage how that growth looks and where we put this.
My hope is that they do extend it up for six months. However, I do think that um, you know, we have a good handle on it in a way that we're moving forward with it now, and I think we're doing okay. Whether or not we'll be ready by July one, I don't know, but. Um, you know, we're moving as fast as we can, or we were allowed to.
Well, I don't think logistically they'll be done by July one, just with the public hearings.
Probably not, but I think that we're, you know, we got a good handle on it right now, I hope. So, alright, so let's just move on. Um, accessory dwelling units, they're allowed everywhere. So what is, what do we want people to do, right? We want them to come home, we want our college kids to come home. We want our, our parents to um come home, you know, they, you know. A lot of, a lot of times, like, I can tell you, a code enforcement officer in town is up for it. I get a lot of phone calls of, hey, my parents live in Florida for half a year, I wanna build an apartment above my garage for them to come home for the summer. Um, hey, my college students graduating, I wanna put in a two-bedroom up because I have two college students that are gonna be graduating a couple of years apart. They have nowhere to go, they need to come home. Like, we get those calls all the time, right? Under LD two thousand and three, accessory dwelling units are allowed everywhere, every zone. Um, you can have up to one. Um, that's just.
Oh, sorry.
So. One is allowed in every zone. Um, right now, ordinance reads that it has to go through planning board approval. Um, they can't be, so it's a, it's a building permit in front of the code enforcement officer and we shall allow that and approve it.
How do we prevent those from becoming Airbnbs?
Short-term.
And be, yeah.
Yeah, short-term. Yeah, and I will tell you that there's a short-term, the, the short-term rental ordinance is not within your LD two thousand and three packet currently, just so you know. Alright, so amended amendments to ordinance for the accessory apartment that we have now. So accessory dwelling units, the code enforcement officer shall approve the addition of one dwelling unit to an existing single-family dwelling, how do you guys like that picture? The ADU shall not exceed thirty percent of total living area. Um, that's in there currently, however, um. Of the, must comply to state plumbing code and must have adequate water, must provide evidence in writing for wastewater capacity.
Could it, wait, does it have to be attached, does it have to be attached to your house?
So currently, under our ordinance, it has to be attached. In the new LD two thousand and three that you have in front of you packet, it's attached or detached.
And you can have multiple, you can have more than one.
Under our ordinance, we only, oh, we can, you guys can choose that, we only have to allow one.
Under LD two thousand and three?
Everywhere, yeah.
Is, is that something, wait a minute, I thought LD two thousand and three allowed for multiple accessory dwellings.
One connected, one somewhere else, or, or one of each.
Are you just proposing one, or is that what LD twenty-three says?
So, accessory dwelling units, we only have to allow one. For the rest of LD two thousand and three, which you saw before, exactly how you're stating, that's how we have to allow that.
That's it, that's for the affordability, if they're going after that, then they'll be allowed extra.
Accessory dwelling units don't have to meet any of the dimensional requirement standards. The standards for ADUs are located in table B, and we, they don't have to have setbacks, road frontage. Um, dimension requirements, square footage of lots, nothing.
Does that mean you can build an ADU that basically looks like a house?
Yep, so in our. The only, the biggest difference for ADU, um, that the town's gonna see is. In our ordinance, off the top of my head, I can't remember, it's four, I think it's four hundred square feet is the minimum residential, like apartment, eighty. The middle, or something like that, or six, maybe six, okay. But under LD two thousand and three, it's a hundred and ninety square feet. Yeah. Hundred and ninety square feet.
That's not even the size of a, what do you call this stupid, you know, mini, micro, what do you call it?
So to understand, to understand ADUs, um, this is kinda what they look like. Attach ADUs on the top, attach ADUs next to that. Attached above garage, so that bonus room above your garage, you know, a lot of families are making into um ADUs. Interior basement ADUs, as long as they can meet egress requirements. Um, interior converted garage ADU, um, people are taking their garages and turning them into apartments. Picking up doors and creating that, so it's functional, interior upper floor ADU, where the bottom floor is living space for one. Then they create that ADU upstairs. ADUs can be attached or detached under the new ordinance. Um, amendment that you have in front of you, either main dwelling or ADU must be owner occupied. So if Aaron, let me think on you, um, he decides he wants to bring mom home. So Aaron brings mom home and he creates a detached ADU. Mom is elderly, mom then goes into assisted living and Aaron goes, you know what? Mom's going up north and I'm gonna go up north too, and I'm gonna rent out my house and my ADU, you can't do that. So it has to be owner occupied, one or the other. Um, dimension requirements in table B, one shall be met, which basically means that ADUs can go anywhere and we can't, um. They don't have to prove, like, you're downtown and, you know, you have a ten thousand square foot lot. Um, they don't have to have a twenty thousand square foot lot to create that ADU, they have, there's no. Increase in density at all or dimensional requirement for that.
Can I, can I ask, has that been challenged legally yet, the fact that you can't then rent out both units when you were somewhere else?
Um.
Cause that would be sort of a taking, I would say, so I'm wondering if that's really been challenged, the idea of owner.
Well, here's the thing. That could be challenged at the state level, but that's how it's written in our ordinance.
I got you.
We could take that out of our ordinance and then, then it would be fine, but that's. How it is written in our ordinance currently.
So it was, when I first moved here, I think our ordinance actually said that a family member had to occupy your ADU, which is clearly not. We don't.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hey, this is it, questions?
Jenny, can you go back to like slide two, three, maybe?
Yes. Which one, this one?
Uh, go up.
This one?
Yeah, you're gonna have to go back, yeah, uh, nope, down.
Hold on.
Down, down. Uh, nope, down one more. Where was that other?
One more, one more.
Keep going. Right there.
This is not.
Existing, right, but. For a lot, for lots with one, okay, so now I'm saying existing dwelling, you know, I'm thinking of an ADU. How is that ADU different than that? Cause what, if we allow one. For lots with an existing dwelling unit, I could build two. One additional dwelling unit, I read that it's another ADU. Right.
The, the, the big difference here is that this side, there's no requirement to, for either any of these.
Correct.
So.
And also the size is. So, so, okay, so I can do, um, you know, a single family home lot.
Can you actually give him this one too? So our chair right now is being handed um from the LD two thousand and three guidance document. From the state.
This one says you do need more land.
That's not for in ADU, that's for these.
No, I, yes, but, okay.
Yes.
I, LD two thousand and three, the first part says wherever you have a single family house, you now can have up to four, right? And I was in the impression that meant on the same amount of land.
Oh, no, 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 I think we covered it, we already talked about this. And you have a ten thousand square foot lot and you put in additional dwelling, you need twenty thousand square feet. And if you have a third dwelling, you need thirty thousand square feet. The only dimensional requirement. That those additional houses do not need is road frontage.
Okay. Gotcha.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Cause I, I might have confused you a minute.
Sorry, it's, it's fine, I get it now, I see, this is good, this is very good. Yeah, that, that helps, hold on, that's all. So the point is, is that where you only allow a single family house, you now can have four, but you still have to basically have enough land to satisfy. Whatever the code requirements there are for that density.
Yeah.
So does it actually increase the density at all?
Yeah.
I mean, cause.
No, because you do, if you had enough land for you, just subdivided it, it would be the same exact thing, right? Yeah, it doesn't increase.
It's still cheaper to.
In the way.
Close terms together rather than build, you know, three separate houses each on two acres of land, you know. So I, so I, so I get that.
Yep.
I guess I'm still struggling to reconcile that language that was there.
Which one?
Uh, yeah.
Cause that's, you're talking, cause it's a house, so an ADU is, it's just not a house, it's a.
No, I understand what that, I understand what that is.
Tiny house, that's what.
Uh, right there. Residential, each dwelling must have, okay, for lots with one existing dwelling unit.
Yeah, one house already on it.
Yeah, I, that says to me right there, I can have uh up to two additional dwelling units shall be allowed.
Yeah.
Now, if I'm on, if the dimension says a hundred and twenty thousand square feet per lot or whatever. And if I wanna build another garage with an apartment above it, or just a, just another little apartment house.
That's an ADU.
So one dwelling unit. Within or attached to an existing structure, so by now, attach it to the house, here's one. Or one additional detached dwelling unit, or one of each. So I can have two.
Yeah.
So there would be three dwelling units essentially on that particular lot, one attached to the home and one not attached to the home. On my two acre parcel of land. Except, they still have to meet the dimensional requirements, and the only way to do that. Is I have to have maybe ten acres or four acres, so they can have a certain distance apart.
So there's two acres of land requirement for one existing dwelling, you need four acres. You don't need to meet road frontage, but you need to meet every single other.
So this, so this, what you're saying there is tied to that document, so I would need to have, oh, you wanna do two. Even if it's attached to the house.
We need two more acres.
I need, I need another two acres.
Sure.
Okay.
So the point is.
I get it.
The, right, the point is.
Yeah, I get it.
There, we have places where we only allow single-family houses, we're gonna allow you to have. Multi-family housing, really, if you have one, two, three, or four even, but you still need to provide the amount of acreage.
Yeah.
Under, it doesn't, it doesn't, you don't get out of that part, that's what I.
So, so, so there's that issue, fine, that's. So, so, so there's that issue, fine, that's one issue, but putting all of that aside, I'm still now allowed one ADU.
You can have an ADU anywhere you want.
Right, and you don't have to increase your lot size.
All that is, is a building permit.
Yeah.
For the code officer. Um. Hold on one second, I just wanna add something to that, also for ADUs, um, single family home has a two space minimum for parking, right? Under this new law, um, if you have an ADU, we don't anyway, but if you, if you have an ADU, you can increase that parking, so we still only need to have the two.
So now we're pushing people out into the roadways.
Well, I hope not, but.
Yeah, that's where that.
We can make it more restrictive though, right, we're allowed to make it more restrictive, or we could require a parking space for the ADU.
Nope, you cannot.
Why?
Because LD two thousand and three says you can. And this is a great question for Hannah and EJ, as you get into like the legal aspect, cause I'm not, I'm not, um, an expert on that, like they're, they're very good at doing.
So I think of driving down other roads in town.
Yep.
As the children get older.
Yep.
Uh, and one car turns into two, turns into three, and there's nowhere left for them to park, and they're all in the roads, and you're driving down the road like this. Uh, what, what's, what could we do in the sense of which gets into the zoning and where they're gonna be and everything, you know? Are we prevented from
Yeah, of course.
restricting on street parking? So we're not saying, you know, and, and if if, if, if the law says, well, you can still have your two spaces and this apartment, you know, can handle two more people, those two people are gonna have two more cars, but there's no room in the driveway, where are those two cars gonna go, they're gonna wind up in the road. Now you get into all the other issues associated with that, so could that be prevented?
I, I, I don't know where, especially downtown, where we have apartment buildings, everything else is duplexes or a few multiplexes, but, I, I mean, even Aggie, there's plenty of room to put in more parking that most people's fault, so it isn't anywhere where people park on the street, except.
Actually.
No?
Yeah.
Yeah. So except, except.
Lower Main Street is part of it, which is lower Main Street, that whole area.
Yeah.
Of the little streets around me, Vice Street, Tidbit Street, all the areas where we walk, Parent Street, people park four and five cars in their front lawns. We also have the overnight parking van here from November to April, and what happens, which is amazing, at least in my neighborhood, people really, really try very hard to park on their properties, they can park them on their lawns. And trying to get their cars off the street, if we had a parking van in the evening, no one, and no one in B one would be able to have an accessory requirement. Cause you wouldn't be able to leave your car on the street.
I mean, when I've been driving around, I've seen cars parked all over the road, and then whatever, Mill, Aggie, Beach Road, all those roads, it's, it's crazy to try to get through there sometimes.
But is there anything to prevent like a family with like nine kids and like five of them are driving, they've got a bunch of cars anyway, they've only got a family home? I mean, there's nothing that prevents them from having that, we can't count on that, an, an amount of cars, right?
Like you're talking about my life right now.
I know, that was me growing up, so.
You know, I understand to a degree that this is gonna happen, right? I guess what I'm saying though, is if they're saying, you can do this, let's be honest, when the law says and the law changes this, we know people are gonna, some there's gonna be some entrepreneurial people out there that are gonna do that, and they're gonna see a way to make some money on rental. Why wouldn't they try if they have the means to do it? And now it's saying, well, it's a smaller area, whatever, you can have your ADU, you don't have to meet the, my, my wife and I, we park here. Uh, you can park out on the road. And, you know, again, that becomes a larger issue, how you're pushing that out into the public way, you're pushing that out into a residential neighborhood.
You know.
Pushing all of that out, and are we creating a, a, a larger problem?
Well, I, I hate to say it, everybody lives under different circumstances. You know, for people who don't have the room to create an ADU, oh, well, what can I say? Like, you know, we all have different sized lots, we all live in different types of houses, I mean, this just can't apply to every single instance in our town, and that's just the way it is. And that goes to parking, I mean, I'm sorry, there are people in your neighborhood who have to park their cars in their lawn.
Oh, my point is, we, we actually have an ordinance that says that you can't do that.
This is, that, so what I'm getting at here is, how do you, what do we do to look at that? Because again, just, you know, similar to the home occupation, and being asked to look and combine major and minor into one, you know, what are the other unintended consequences that are gonna be coming up here?
Right, so I would.
That's what I'm.
Right, and I, and I would say.
That's the issue.
I would say, we would have to look again at what our parking requirements are, and our on-street parking requirements, and say, maybe in some places where there's a lot of density, on-street parking overnight should be allowed. And during, maybe the winter, except for snow, emergency, we have to go park it at the high school or at the mill or something, should be allowed, and we would have to look at that in order to accommodate people's ability to do this, or we could just say, we're gonna keep it exactly as it is, and some people just will not be able to have an ADU, and that's, once again.
But can we say that?
Sure we can, it's just, there are people who can't do things because they don't have enough room on their lot.
You can't, you're gonna do an ADU, it's the right, it's the right.
Cannot, yeah.
Well, you, you can't build an ADU if you don't have enough room on your lot, and you can't do the setbacks, that doesn't allow you to.
Let me just remind you, under ADU, there's no additional parking requirement, and you don't have to meet the setbacks for an ADU, they're allowed everywhere, every zone, every person.
So the only way to regulate that, if we're concerned, is to look at a parking ordinance, or looking to modify what we have, because.
Not with ADUs, ADUs are allowed everywhere, no parking.
But there, I, I'm just saying, there are instances in our code throughout it, where people just, they can't comply with the code, and so they can't do it.
Right.
Like, I, I might wanna build a, I don't know what, and I don't have the room, and I just, I just can't boot on my lot, and then that's, that's just the way it is, and I'm just saying, there are people, maybe then won't be able to build an ADU, because they don't have enough.
So, what I'm saying is, to make, to make our ordinances meet what the state is asking us, I lived in Portsmouth for ten years as a young chef, and I rented everywhere and lived in possibly small little places, and the issue was always where you're gonna need to park.
True.
We always crammed them and left them on the street, but lo and behold, we all would be again, the coffee, down the tow place, because we would get towed all winter long, it was like a thing, you, everybody would say, is this a snow emergency, just drag your car to the municipal lot, the municipal lot was always full and had no place to move your car. Should I say I didn't wanna live in Portsmouth, and I, and I, and I love that density and I love that feeling? Had Portsmouth said, you can park your car on the street overnight, would it work out better for people living down there, so if we want that density in B one or, or in other areas, we have to allow to the fact that people are gonna be on the street and not have their cars towed.
And, and I think that's fine, we should have a discussion about that.
Yeah.
So Dover did.
Yeah.
I, I was living right downtown Dover, and it was very congested as far as parking goes, down a few blocks off Main Street. And, uh, and, you know, and so a lot, most of the neighbors do have to park on the street, except for snowbergs. Snow emergencies, you know, they, the city sends out that notice saying, hey, everybody clear your cars, and you gotta figure out where to move it, usually the city opens up their garage, but.
Yeah. We have to remember, just because something's allowed to ADUs, right, so we'll say, everyone can have an ADU, but not everyone in this house can have an ADU. We should think about if everyone did, sure, but the reality is, not everybody will, you know? Not everyone's gonna rush up, are you, are you gonna add an ADU to your house, who knows, right? Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great, but maybe Bill doesn't, maybe Zach doesn't, maybe Greg wants to, you know what I mean, like, that's not for everybody.
Right.
However, this ordinance is for everybody, and we have to make sure that it's fair across the board.
Well, you know, I think about, you know, again.
But.
The residential areas, you know, I'm thinking right now about some of the business that's before us today with certain, uh, uh, closed developments, with this being injected on the top, on top of that, and whether or not individuals may be interested in doing these ADUs. And again, now I'm sitting here thinking, again, with the parking requirements doesn't matter anymore, I do get concerned about these cars and these vehicles being pushed out into the roadways.
Yeah.
And that will be then, you know, be creating longer term code enforcement issues, uh, problems for the town, because people are gonna be getting phone calls, I think there's, I think there's more there than just, oh, just not, they're not gonna do it, no, I think people will. And I think it will create a problem, though. You know, I just see that, and then I think it's something we're gonna have to look at.
And again.
There's a kind of unintended consequences in this whole thing.
Yeah, and whether they will or not, doesn't matter, they're allowed to.
Right.
They want to, you know?
Can I ask just one more time, cause I, I, I remember the original three parts, and I remember the EVs, ADU section, and I was on the impression you could have more than one.
My understanding and Lee, Lee Jay and I had a conversation about this, but I will follow up that question with EJ.
Okay.
Is, it's one per.
One per lot? That was already in our ordinance.
I understand that, is it one?
But it's not one per, per residential structure, I don't know, it's, it's one per lot.
Okay, I could've sworn it was, you could have almost unlimited numbers.
Of ADUs.
Yeah.
Well, that's EJ. Well, EJ would have updated that in our ordinance if that was true. Um, it's one per, according to that statement.
Okay, there are, I, I know there were amendments, there were amendments to two thousand and three, since we saw it, and in our presentation a year ago, so maybe it got yeah, updated, but I could've sworn it was. Yeah.
And can I just get one more clarification on this one regarding the addition of, uh, two dwelling units? You know, we, you discussed that it doesn't, it has to meet all the dimensional requirements, but that's just to a buddy's loss, not to each other.
To each other, if you ever split those lots later on and you ever wanna sell.
Oh.
Um, I'm not sure how that's been, but how it works now, let me give you, let me give you a rundown of how it works now.
Okay.
So in our current ordinance, you can have two structures off one driveway. So, um, that, Zach has a house, right, I mean, it's Red Road, if you're out there, right? Um, he could put another single family dwelling on his property if he had enough dimensional requirement to do that, right? As long as that second structure can meet the side setback, back setbacks, front setbacks, whatever it needs from each other, so that if he said, you know what? I'm gonna sell off that house, I don't wanna deal with it anymore, or, you know, whatever, he needs to be able to, under our current ordinance, have enough road frontage to do it, have enough step back allowance to do that, so that when he draws the line in the sand and separates that out, imagine.
I thought the road.
You need frontage was not. Not under this, this is current ordinance, this is not LD two thousand and three, this is our current ordinance right now.
Okay.
You do need road frontage for that second structure, I just wanna clarify that. Under this, it's different, you still need to meet that fifty foot setback from each other, but you don't, you have to meet all dimensional requirements for your zone, except road frontage.
But that means you wouldn't be able to ever subdivide the property if you didn't have the road, if you didn't, if you weren't required to meet the road frontage here, under LD two thousand and three, that means you couldn't subdivide later on.
That's a great question, can you subdivide later on? That's not clear, right?
I see, I see that, being in a backdoor sub.
Yeah.
You got it one way, you didn't get your permit, you can do it another way.
Well, it's, it's not that, don't think it was a factor or something, just thinking is that the state of Maine is, you know.
Allowing it to happen, that's the, yeah.
Well, the state of Maine wants more housing.
That's a great question, and I don't think we know the answer to it, right yet, but it's a great question, I don't know. Yeah.
It feels, it feels more like the old Maine lots that I encountered years ago when I was looking for my first home, where you'd find these crazy lots with like one house, and then like the son got married, then the house was kind of built off the.
I think that was the house back in the fort.
But they sold only half of the barn. You know, it's, it's like, it's like a return to that sort of.
The agrarian extended family?
Yeah, kinda.
Or, or maybe we just don't have enough housing, but the real problem is, it, it, there's no trickle down to affordability. You know, a, a vacuum will be filled by people at the higher end of the socioeconomic scale, to put it politely, and will occupy, and this is nothing but a big gift to housing developers. And I'm not against housing development, but we need more affordability, and this law actually will not do it. It, it will just allow developers to come in and put in more housing and sell them for five hundred thousand dollars.
And that's my concern, when we start talking about when we start to lose some control, I agree with you, Percy, that, you know, we're gonna have people coming in and frankly not caring about the number of parking spaces, and people that, with the means that can build additionally ADUs, what do they care, they're gonna pocket the cash and push it out into.
And I hate to say it, that's.
And that's what's being allowed, that's just being allowed, and so.
Yep, we allow people to develop and own private property and develop it and build housing, and, you know, if you don't like that, we could change that, but no one's going to, so you know, the state in its lack of wisdom has to compromise, but really, all that is going to do is create more housing for people who can afford it, and, you know, for everybody else, people who grew up here, and people who are starter families, and people who are at the lower end of the pay scale, they will be able to move here, this won't help that, no one is gonna build affordable housing when they could build fourplexes. And affordable housing actually doesn't exist in that kind of law, people generally do not do single family affordable housing, or even fourplex affordable housing. The kind of funding used to build affordable housing doesn't really, it sort of exists for that, but not for.
So interestingly enough, to speak on that. So interestingly enough to speak on that, for the affordable housing. So affordable housing wasn't in our ordinance, it'll be added, so that's interesting. The other thing is, there's a spot in your documents that you have in front of you, if you guys wanna take a peek at it real quick.
Uh, do I have?
My many little.
So.
It's so much cheaper.
I know, and I'm sorry.
That's okay, I like, okay, you're doing your job.
All right, so if you, if you, yep, that's a town in your, that's right, one forty dash forty seven in front of you.
One forty dash, which one?
The drop.
Just very first.
The drop, yeah. So if you go all the way to the second to last page.
The draft one?
Uh.
The one that has the watermark on it?
This one will not have a watermark on it, because it was edited document, because there was a, there was a, um, wrong word on it.
Is that we're looking at, for all the ready?
Last page of that. And in here, I asked a question today, um, because it came up, it said, um, was it this one? Yes. So for long-term affordability, where it says, prior to granting the certificate of occupancy, do you guys see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was added to our ordinance for everyone on the, that's watching, a long-term affordability under B. It says, prior to granting a certificate of occupancy or other final approval of an affordable housing development, municipality, also prior to owner of the affordable housing develop, development, one, to execute a restrictive covenant that is enforceable by a party acceptable to the municipality. So I said to Lee Jay, right, so I said to Lee Jay today, I said, who is that party? Who is that enforcing party, is it code enforcement, is it town? No, it's not, and he told me there's one company that he knows of that does that, and they're called Avista.
Avista, they're, they're a nonprofit affordable housing.
Yep, and they are the only company that he knows of that is that enforceable party for acceptable to municipality.
Well, they're not.
So that's interesting, right?
They're, oh, okay.
Go ahead, no, go.
So there is no way to enforce this, Avista Housing is not gonna be hired on, that's not what they do, they themselves are affordable housing developers, who own affordable housing, and they own in fact our senior housing that was built behind our brick block, right?
You're saying, yeah.
Right, and, um, and so, they don't, they're not gonna start a property management company that enforces this ordinance, I guarantee it.
No.
There are a bunch of other affordable housing developers, Fair Tide is one now, has just started, the Housing Partnership in Portsmouth. Um, a few others, there's one in Derry, there's like so many in the states, and, and in New Hampshire, and in Maine, and in Seacoast Maine, there are almost none.
Yeah.
So, um, and in, enforcement is never gonna happen, is what I'm gonna say.
Correct.
People are gonna rent it forever they want, no one's gonna check on it, there isn't gonna be a party to check up on it.
Yep, so it's interesting, cause that comes down from the state, that's like, you know.
Yeah, that's so ridiculous.
So I asked that, I was like, who is that person, right? And there was one company, that was one name, and that was the only name.
That's not what they do.
What you might see, right, so we've seen this before, is a few more companies might pop up.
Well, they're.
But if they don't.
Right.
Then, I mean, I don't know anything about them, but, you know.
So there's a, there are companies, Stewart, right, the big Stewart companies, and, um, Alliance is a small company who do property management of affordable housing, right? And, um, but they also, they wanna do forty unit buildings, or eighty unit buildings, they don't want, they're not gonna do like a unit here and a unit there, because that, they don't make any money that way, that, it would be a total loss, so this model is just, it's, it's awful. It, it just cannot, yeah, no one, it's just not gonna happen. And also, I have to say, despite two thousand and three being, having good intentions, if you really want affordable housing in town, we could have an inclusionary zoning ordinance instead. We could go about this in a different way, we could have a zoning ordinance that says when you build rental housing, ten percent, thirty percent, fifty percent of it has to be affordable, and that's a totally different scale. Right, Massachusetts has forty B, ten percent. Right? Massachusetts has forty B, ten percent of all rental housing in every single town in Massachusetts has to be affordable.
Right.
Right, and sixty percent air meeting, not eighty, so.
And that's how a lot of like, let's just say Dover, New Hampshire, right, they're pretty local to us. You know, if you wanna put up a housing development, we'll just say forty units, and they don't agree with that or whatever, and you can plead your case, from what we know, I've never done it personally, but you can plead your case to them, and as long as some of those units are affordable, they'll be like, yeah, sure. You know, they have the ability to say yes to additional unit or dwellings, if you can guarantee they're gonna be affordable, and I think that's great, I think that's great, but it's hard to be prepared right now.
Hittory has already in, in, enacted its own density bonuses that have nothing to do with two thousand and three, they did it last year, they put together a housing committee. I keep encouraging us to go and talk to them, and, or have Emily Flinks from come in and talk to us about how they enacted it, she's on the housing committee, she's executive director of Fair Tide, full disclosure, I'm on the board of Fair Tide.
Yeah.
And, um, and that gives people more incentives to build affordable housing than a lot of other things, plus it, I think it, I think it is inclusionary, they have an in-lut fee you can pay instead, often people can buy their way out of doing the inclusion part, which I quite frankly hate, but it's another way to, to, it, you know, get it done, and it gives, puts money into a pool that then is spent on doing your affordable housing.
I'd be interested to know how we get somebody like that in front of us, kinda talking about that, and.
Just invite them.
You know?
Just invite.
Maybe we should, well, you guys can do that, but maybe we, we invite her into a meeting, you know?
Yeah.
Figure out like. Yeah, I don't know.
So there's not a whole lot we can do about LD two thousand and three at this point, but it doesn't mean the town should stop working on affordability issues, I think, especially in light of it was certainly a big discussion at the comp plan, and, you know, I hope that we.
I agree, and sorry, I don't know the, all the answers, I definitely don't, um, I can just tell you that we weren't really.
Fired, yeah.
What's the next step?
The next step is figure informational items, take the packet, take the ordinance, look through it, um, just really get your thoughts together, and then, really, next steps come to you, um, I'm gonna put it on the planning board agenda, this ordinance amendment for LD two thousand and three for June seventh. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we'll get to it.
Hmm, yeah, I don't think we will, I'm actually thinking, do we wanna have a workshop? I mean, the bottom line is, it's not gonna be adopted by this town by, you know, July first, it, it, there's no way. What's that?
It said neener, neener, neener state of Maine.
Yeah, and, and I mean.
What are they gonna do?
Yeah, right, I'm not, if the town council says otherwise, I'm not really worried about that. But do we wanna have a workshop like at six o'clock for our next meeting, or the second meeting in June?
Fine by me.
Yeah.
Do whatever we need.
Everybody okay with that?
Can everyone make six o'clock?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if the six o'clock sounded okay, the second meeting.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in June.
Twenty first.
Yeah, we'll meet at six o'clock and talk about it, because there's a lot here, I mean, we just got this, you know, you gotta kinda look at it.
I'm gonna go back to the original presentation that Paul Shoemaker.
I definitely think, encourage you to look through it.
Yeah, well.
Definitely. You're not gonna be here, Zach?
Oh, you know what? Yeah. No wonder he went to workshop on the twenty first.
Oh my gosh. Zach, sorry, you're speaking of the example, but literally, I just realized I probably shouldn't have said you rode you live on, but it's public knowledge.
It's a long road.
And, yeah. And it's a perfect example for this, there's a lot of, you know.
Can I?
So I do apologize for saying.
I can do the twenty first, I can.
Oh, you're cheating, okay, twenty first?
Yeah.
Six man workshop. For the planning board. Do you have public here?
What's that?
Do you have public here?
You're always welcome.
Yep, I'll post it.
Yeah.
Oh. Do you remember we had a PowerPoint that Paul Shoemaker did?
Yeah, back in like August.
Yeah, can we, I had a copy somewhere, I'm sure I still have it, but could you send down again if you have it?
Yes, again.
That'd be great, is that, I thought, not that yours wasn't beautiful, Janet, it was really, I love.
No, it is, will be more informational, because that's what they do.
Okay, thank you, I just wanna make sure. Make sure Anderson's down with it, but.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, yeah.
We done?
No, we have another. It's a good one.
What? You know, not that I wanna go home and have an evening with nothing to do for a change.
And so at the last meeting, old business, we had a public hearing on adding municipal buildings.
Oh, yeah.
We've all had an opportunity to review that, I don't think anyone's here, uh, we had a public hearing.